Thank you, Richard. Good afternoon, members and officers, and all those watching this meeting remotely, and welcome to the annual general meeting of Monmashia County Council. I hope you can all hear me all right. This meeting is being held in accordance with the emergency legislation that enables the council to hold a full council meeting remotely alongside the council's constitution and ensures that the council can continue to operate and make democratic decisions in an open and transparent way. I would like to remind members that this meeting is still being livestreamed to the public, and I can request that you all switch off your cameras and mute your microphones when you are not speaking directly to the committee to ensure there is no unnecessary background noise. All sections of the Members' Code of Conduct still apply to members in this virtual meeting environment and are as applicable now as they are in a traditional meeting setting. And I also remind members of the meeting to ensure your chat functionality is switched on, and should you wish to speak on a particular item, to make your request clear in that area using the raise hand facility for that particular agenda item. And I will invite you to speak at the relevant point of the meeting, where you can then unmute your microphone and switch your camera back on. I'd like to make it clear that any decision made in this fully remote meeting should be considered the same as any other decision of the council, provided that the meeting remains core it and meets its legislative requirement to make a decision. Regardless of whether a member of this meeting is unable to cast their vote, due to technical issues, the meeting of the council will remain valid. Just a reminder about points of order. A request to raise a point of order can be written into the chat bar. Moving and seconding items, this can also be done in this chat bar. There will be a raise hand facility for this to be carried out. And ahead of the first vote, I will give a brief overview to members and the public of the process. At this point, out of respect for all who have passed away since we last met, including a member of our Monmashia family colleague, Alan Brown, also former Lord Lieutenant of Gwent, Sir Simon Boyle, can I ask that we observe a period of silence, and we offer our condolences to all who have been bereaved? Thank you. I would now like to invite Reverend Counselor Bob Greenland to conduct prayers.
Heavenly Father, as we gather as members and officers of Monmashia County Council, we come before you that we might know your will for the people of this county and do as Jesus commanded, to love one another as he has loved us. May we make that love known through the decisions we take today and through this coming council year. Father, be with the pupils, teachers, and all staff in our schools at the beginning of a new academic year. Especially, we pray for new pupils, those just beginning on the path of education, and those moving to their secondary schools. May all pupils and staff settle into the new year with confidence and a will to make up for the lost time of the past few months. At this time of economic uncertainty, we bring to you those facing financial strain, those who have lost their jobs, and those facing redundancy over the coming months. May we, in our deliberations, always have as our priority those who find themselves unable to cope. As we, as a council, face the most uncertain and difficult time that many will have known, may we put aside personal ambition, party rivalry, and differences, working together that our citizens may live in peace, in safety, in good homes, and may we work together to alleviate poverty in our county. In the strong and loving name of Christ our Savior, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councillor Greenland. We now move on to item one. Do we have any apologies for absence? They can be put into the chat bar. If you wish to speak, pop your name into the chat bar. Give people a moment. Right, we have apologies from Kevin Williams. Counselor Watkins, can I invite you to speak? You've indicated you wish to give some apologies.
Apologies from Linda Guppy and Jess Becker. They hope to join the meeting later if they're available, but unfortunately, work commitments are proving a little bit more challenging than they had hoped this afternoon.
Thank you, Counselor Watkins. Counselor Fox?
I believe Peter Clark will not be joining us, but I will stand corrected if he has.
Thank you, Counselor Fox. Nobody else has indicated they wish to speak. Thank you. Declarations of interest. As we've done previously, people can express an interest now, or as and when. And should you wish to declare an interest, I would invite you to speak to make that declaration, and the form to do so will be electronically sent to you by Democratic Services. Do we have any declarations of interest at this moment? Okay. Nothing's appeared in the chat bar. Thank you, members. Before we move on to the next item, the election of chairman, I have an announcement to make. Monmashia County Council has been very fortunate and has received a gold award. It's been awarded by the Wales and West Midland Reserve Forces and Cadets Association. This award is in recognition of the ongoing support given by Monmashia County Council to our armed forces. So I'd like to give a special thank you to Jo Skidmore, who recently organised the resigning of the Armed Forces Covenant, which Monmashia's five mayors participated in, and to our Armed Forces Champion, Councillor Laura Jones, MS. And we have also received a very nice letter of congratulations from the Right Honourable Ben Wallace, MP, Secretary of State, for Defence upon our gain in this award. So my congratulations to everybody involved. Thank you all very much. Right, so the next item on the agenda is the election of chairman for the civic year 2020 to 2021.
Madam Chairman, at this point, could I address the council?
Thank you, Counselor Fox. Yes, please do.
Yeah, thank you. And good afternoon, members. Good to finally get to this AGM. A strange one, carried out in this way, and obviously, a bit longer timeframe than we would have normally had. But I don't think that should stop us reflecting, as we normally would, on the good work of our chairman. And Sheila, you have been an outstanding chairperson, and you've had a really challenging time. But first of all, let's reflect back a little on the council life perhaps before Covid. And I know how really active you have been. You've had a really busy time. It's been busy since, I know, but in a different way now. But I just sort of thought, I don't want time to pass in this strange world without us just reflecting on your good work. And fair play. You know, your charities, Gwent Music and Alzheimer's Society, Cymru, you have done a fantastic job. You've raised, you know, six and a half thousand pounds in that short active year before we got locked down. You attended over 100 engagements, you know, flat out. That was before March, 100 different engagements. And your charity events at the Sugarloaf Vineyard, your chairman's Christmas raffle raised well over 500 pounds, and then you had the charity ball in Abergavenie, and that was a really great success. There's a huge list I've got here of some of the things that you've been part of, really representing us so well as our first citizen, and I thank you so much for all you have done. And of course, you've led us then, as chairman, through some really dark times, as we've all faced Covid, and you have managed to get us up and running and confident online. And I think the calm way you've conducted our council meetings has given us confidence, and they have gone really well, even from the first one, which was a real trial. I think you've done an absolutely wonderful job. So, Madam Chairman, on behalf of all of the council, can I thank you for all you have done to date, and I hope what you will continue to do for us. So thanks again, Sheila. You've been brilliant.
Thank you, Counselor Fox, Leader, for the very kind words. They really appreciate it. I didn't expect all of that. I've just done what I felt I could, where I could, and I really did not envisage remaining in this position for over 12 months. However, here we are, 16 months later, during which time I have tried to support the work of this council in the best way that I could, in coping with a rapidly changing situation that we all find ourselves in. During the past 16 months, it's been an enormous privilege and very humbling to have been your chairman, representing your council far and wide, meeting so many people at events who are very committed to improving the lives of others, and that is going to stand us in good stead to cope with whatever lies ahead. Chris and I attended events both in Monmashia and our neighbouring counties. Thanks to the support of our Vice Chairman and his good lady, and previous chairman, we managed to fly the flag for Monmashia on multiple occasions. I didn't realise quite how many until you mentioned them, Leader. Can I mention how grateful I am to have received help and support from members of this council, and in particular, past chairmen for their advice? You've given me confidence to carry on, and I do appreciate that, and I hope in some way that's been reciprocated. We're currently adapting to change, and everyone in Monmashia wishes to see a return to some sort of normality. I have endeavoured to be as fair as I can. With the best wishes from Monmashia, always paramount. So thank you once again.
Congratulations.
I now go to call for nominations for the Office of Chairman of the County Council for the civic year 2020 to 21. And in doing so, I will hand over to our monitoring officer, Mr Matthew Phillips.
Councillors, good afternoon. Matt Phillips here. And yes, if I can just repeat that request, could we have nominations for Chairman of County Council for the coming civic years?
Yeah, I address Mr Phillips, not the chairman. Yeah, thank you, Matt, for inviting for nominations. And I would like to nominate our current chairman to continue for the rest of this really strange year. Sheila, as I just referenced, has done a fantastic job in the first part of the year and in this unusual situation where she has to lead us online. And I don't think it would be fair to invite a new chairman to be able to conduct business through this environment. Sheila's done a wonderful job, and I know she can guide us and take us through to next May, when hopefully, some level of normality is resumed and we can revert to normal practice. Sheila has been an outstanding chairperson, and I just hope she will agree to continue for us through these difficult times, and I so do move.
Thanks, Counselor Fox. And is that seconded, please?
I have very great pleasure in seconding that nomination for Councillor Woodhouse.
Thanks, Councillor Murphy. And can I call on the council if there are any questions? Happy to have someone speak or write a name into the chat bar. Okay, I can see no further nominations being put forward, so we'll get the vote bar up in the chat bar when that's ready, and I just invite members of the council to vote for your preference. That will be for or against Councillor Sheila Woodhouse to be elected as the next Chair of the council. Just waiting for the voting function to come up in the chat bar if you're with us. And hopefully, you can all see the vote function in the chat bar now, so if I could invite you to submit your votes.
Chair, may I just ask Matt to just make members aware that they scroll down the chat bar, just in case they can't see it on their right hand side, that if they scroll down it, they will find it. Is that okay, Chair?
Yeah, thank you very much, Councillor. Yeah, I can see we've got 28 people voted so far. If anyone's unsure as to whether they voted, they can press the button again. It won't affect the overall outcome. So we're well in excess of the number required of voted for, so I'm going to now invite Councillor Sheila Woodhouse to read and sign her Declaration of Acceptance of Office.
Thank you very much indeed. I, Sheila Woodhouse, having been elected to the Office of Chairman of Monmashia County Council, declare that I will take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to observe the code for the time being as to the conduct which is expected of members of Monmashia County Council and which may be revised from time to time. Thank you. That's duly signed. And can I say once again that it's been a great honour and a privilege to have been Chairman of Monmashia County Council, and I really do thank you all for giving me the opportunity to continue. During the period since last May, we've all experienced some of the most challenging circumstances, circumstances we could not have even imagined this time last year. However, the dedication and commitment of our officers, staff, and members has shown how very special Monmashia County Council is and how the community spirit here rose to an exceptional level. You do not need me to tell you this, but the good people of Monmashia went to great lengths to care for each other. Sometimes we have to take stock and appreciate what we have, and how many times have you heard that phrase during this pandemic? The obvious determination of everyone here at MCC in striving to adapt during these challenging times whilst also ensuring that people feel safe and confident with all the measures being put in place by the MCC team, so ably led by Paul Matthews. These unprecedented times will no doubt, in my mind, be judged in the future as very successful for Monmashia County Council. Every member has played a major part and has proved that no matter what our political views are, we have all worked together as a single team to benefit our residents, those who work here and our visitors. The forthcoming months may well be as challenging as the past, however, we must have confidence in our own ability to manage whatever the near future may hold. And I will offer my support in whatever way I can, and I thank you all once again. Item four now. I'm going to call for nominations for the Office of Vice Chairman of the County Council for the civic year 2020 to 2021.
Madam Chair, may I, first of all, congratulate you on your past year as chairman, and also to thank you for taking on the office once again. And as has been said, you have done a sterling job in that role. And also, Councillor Brian Jones has also been a great support during this period of time. It would not be right to ask anyone to move into the role that you have now agreed to take on at this time of the year and in these circumstances. But Brian, I would like to nominate for the role of Vice Chairman for the current year. Brian has been a very good servant of this council for many years, and in this year in particular, he's had his own personal problems, having been flooded out in February and only recently returned to his home. But nevertheless, he has still continued in his role, and I would certainly like to nominate him for the role of Vice Chair for the coming year, or what remains of it.
Thank you, Councillor Greenland. Is that nomination seconded? Councillor Jordan, I see you've put your name in that you wish to speak.
No, that's fine. I second that nomination, but I didn't really mean to click that on. Sorry.
So you've, right, okay, you've seconded the appointment. Do we have any further nominations? If so, please indicate you wish to speak in the chat bar. Right, there don't appear to be any further nominations, so can we please, once we have the vote facility, indicate in the voting facility for or against or abstain for Councillor Brian Jones to be appointed as Vice Chairman for the period 2020 to 2021? People still voting, but it's clearly carried. So congratulations, Councillor Jones, you've been elected Vice Chairman for the period 2021. Can I now invite you to read and sign your Declaration of Acceptance of Office?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me? Thank you. I, Brian Jones, having been elected to the Office of Vice Chairman of Monmashia County Council, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to observe the code for the time being as to the conduct which is expected of members of Monmashia County Council and which may be revised from time to time. Thank you.
When you've signed your declaration, would you like to address the question, Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very briefly, I want to address you, fellow councillors and officers of the council. I sit here as Vice Chairman for the second time and hope that this year, the Office of Vice Chairman may proceed as we would all expect. However, it would be remiss of me not to say at this stage what a fantastic job Councillor Sheila Woodhouse has done of doing her second year round. It's been a difficult time for all conducting our council business, and I know that we'd all wished that things would be back to normal, although goodness knows when that will be. An opportune moment, I think, to thank officers for their good works at such a difficult time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Jones. We'll now move on to the item number five on our agenda, which is public questions. We haven't actually received any, so we'll move on to the next item, receipt of petitions. And likewise, we don't have any positions being presented today. So the next item is item seven, to elect the leader of the council and receive notification of leader delegation appointments to the Cabinet. So do we have a proposal for leader of the council?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to nominate Peter Fox as leader of the council for the coming year. Now, I can't remember how many years Peter has been leader of the council. I think 13. This might be his 14th, I'm not quite sure. But in that period of time, he has made his mark both in this county and much wider. And in fact, when I speak to people outside of the county, as well as inside the county, they often say, oh yeah, he's a really decent guy. He is a nice guy. And it's very unusual for somebody who is so well thought of as a decent guy to also be a confident and worthy leader of a council for so long. But Peter has made that transition and that dual role in a unique way, both here in Monmashia and in Wales. He is well respected as that decent guy, someone you can trust, and we are very fortunate to have had him as our leader for these past 13 years. So I have no hesitation at all in nominating Peter Fox as the leader of the council for the coming year.
Thank you, Councillor Greenland. Can I now invite Councillor Murphy to speak?
Yes, I have a very great pleasure in seconding that nomination, Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any further nominations? Okay, then we have, we'll wait for the vote facility to be put in the chat bar. There we are, the voting facility is now there, so please, councillors and cast your votes. Got a few more people yet to vote. Just wait a few more moments. That's clearly been carried, so I thank you all very much. I congratulate councillor Fox on being re-elected leader of the council for the period 2021. Thank you. Councillor Fox?
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman, and a big thank you to all of my colleagues, especially Bob for that really wonderful nomination. I don't think I'm really deserving of that. It's been a wonderful time over the years, a privilege to represent this organisation. It's a wonderful council, we have our fun, don't we? But actually, we're, you know, it's a good organisation with good members, right the way through all parties. And we all have the same interests at heart and that's doing the very best for all of our communities. We know that some of us would have different, go about it in different ways, but, you know, deep down, we all want the same thing. And that's the very best for the people we serve, the very best for the county. And we will continue to do that. A special thanks to all of my cabinet colleagues who have been working so hard. This environment, and of course, we're not meeting together in county hall, we don't get to see each other, but I get to see cabinet colleagues most days on this format. And I know how much they've been doing in their various portfolios. Nothing has stopped still through this period, this really difficult period, certainly from March on. But before that, when we had all of the flooding as well, colleagues were flat out. And I just want to give a heartfelt thanks to cabinet colleagues for their work. But likewise, to all officers within the council, we are truly blessed with some of the, I think, some of the best staff in Wales. Our officers are just, you know, go above and beyond. And we've seen that demonstrated all the way through the flooding, through to the pandemic, through to the recovery elements now of the pandemic, you know. And what is ahead of us, we don't know, but they'll be there again, making sure that we respond to the challenges we have every day. I'm extremely proud of everybody who works in our organisation and I feel it like a great big family. And, you know, I hope people, the officers enjoy working with us as well. And I know it's not always easy, but I think we all collectively have a great relationship. Can I thank you all members as well? Doesn't matter what you're doing via, be it you're chairing your committees or participating in select committees, for all of your contributions, holding us to account, they're, it's all absolutely fundamental to good governance and you've been really great. It's been a time like I've never known. It's my 13th year, Bob, not quite 14 yet, but I've never known anything quite like this year, none of us have, have we? You know, I think from March, I don't know how many hours I've spent at this table with other leaders and officers and ministers from, you know, just, just flat out trying to address the various situations and respond to them. And it's, it's, it's just been so strange, even this environment now. I'd love to be looking at you all personally and thanking you personally, it's really weird this is, but it's become the semi-normal, I suppose, anyway, for the time, for the time being. We've heard some really worrying news, haven't we, across the, across Gwent, where we're seeing coronavirus cases rising, and that's a real concern for us. I mean, fortunately, things are staying well controlled in Monmash here, but we know that could change very quickly if we don't keep up our good work and our communities don't keep up the good work of being, you know, vigilant against, against this awful virus. And, you know, we certainly don't want to find ourselves in a position in Monmash here as some of our neighbouring authority or one of our neighbouring authorities has found themselves. So let's hope that we can keep, keep this virus out and we can continue to relax some of the things that have been in place and we can bring some level of normality back to our communities. So once again, members, thanks ever so much for your confidence in me. For the seven who didn't have quite so much confidence with me, well, I hope you'll find that I'll do my very best for everyone and in due course. But I'll probably run out of years before you decide that I'm worthy of your support, but there we go. Okay, part of this item on the agenda is to notify, notification of my delegations. And Madam Chair, it's, it's, I'm just fetching up my list, nothing is going to change basically from my perspective on cabinet. Although, as I said, I've had a fantastic, I've got a fantastic team in cabinet and they've done a wonderful job and they continue to do so. So the delegations for this AGM will be, will continue to be councillor Bob Greenland, Cabinet Member for Enterprise and Land Use Planning and Deputy Leader, councillor Phil Murphy, Home Authority Resources, Richard John, also Deputy Leader and Children and Children, Young People and Monlife, Sarah Jones, Social Justice and Community Development, Penny Jones, Social Care, Safeguarding and Health, Jane Pratt, Infrastructure and Neighbourhood Services, and councillor Paul Jordan, Governance and Law. It looks like I've been, I'm visited by some children, so excuse the background noise if it starts. And so I want to pay another thanks to, to my colleagues for, for all of their work. And I know they're going to continue to represent the council extremely well, both here in the county and nationally, and I thank them for that and those are my delegations, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Leader. Right, we move on then to item eight, representation of political groups. So councillor Fox, I think you're going to...
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Okay, we've run, members, you've been, lots of you have been here for many years and you will have seen this report again and again. It has to, we have to receive it at every AGM. The council is required to review at or as soon as practical after the council's annual meeting, the representation of different political groups on the bodies to which the council makes appointments. Now, this schedule will have changed a little of last year because there are always changes within, in groups and the table in two, one there represents the, the positions that various parties hold within the committees. The council must determine the allocation to the different political groups of all of the seats to be filled by appointment by the council. And the council is required to make only such determinations as give effect so far as reasonably practical to the following principles which are listed there in 3.2. So the recommendations, Madam Chairman, is that the council decides to accept the report and the appendices as a review under section 15 of the Local Government and Housing Act 1989 and to initially allocate ordinary committees with the numbers as indicated below as a fair representation and they're in that box. And the other recommendation in 2.2 is that the two planning committee seats allocated to the independent group continue to be filled by the representatives of the Conservative and Labour groups, but only with the permission of the independent group leader. I'm assuming that is currently still the case and I move those recommendations, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Leader. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Councillor Green, and did anybody like to, right, we have a raised hand if anybody wants to ask any questions about this before we go to the vote. Oh, councillor Jones, was that the second nomination?
Yes, Madam Chairman, yes, it was, it was the second, so you can discount it now. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak or ask any questions? Thank you. Right, we'll go to vote then on this one if we could have a voted facility put in the chat bar. And the recommendations that the leader read out as contained in section 2, 2.1 and 2.2 on the report. We have, we have sufficient votes cast for one abstention, so that's carried. Thank you very, very much indeed for that. So we move on to the next item on the agenda with councillor Fox, if you would like to introduce this one as well.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Please excuse the phone ringing in the background. Madam Chairman, this is to, a report to appointment of committees and it's to appoint committees together with their membership and terms of reference in accordance with the council's constitution. And you'll see the various committees listed there below, starting with area committees, and it runs through all of the committees within our realm. And as, as I mentioned, within the appendices, you'll find the terms of reference for, for each. The recommendations are that the council, that the following committees be appointed together with their membership as set below and their terms of reference attached as appendices. That's the first part of the recommendation. But members will note that there is a second part of it and it's reiterated further down under the Democratic Services Committee where the appointment of chairs of these committees are notified. And this one is for that the council appoints the Chair of Democratic Services Committee and we do that today, I believe, Madam Chairman. So I move the first part and leave it to your good self to conduct the second.
Thank you. And we have a second for the first part.
In the chat bar, I'm happy to second that, Chair.
Yes, thank you, councillor Jordan, I've just seen that on the chat bar, thank you very much. Councillor Howard, did you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Can I speak on the second part, whether the votes for the first part, second part, doing it separately, or I'll just keep it in there just in case, all right, we forget.
Yeah, I'll come back to that, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on the first part of this recommendation? Okay, so we'll go to the vote on that one then. Appointment to committees. Just give it a moment. There we are. Members, if you could cast your vote now for the first part of this recommendation item, that the following committees be appointed together with membership as set below and their terms of reference attached as appendices. Yes, that's clearly carried. Thank you very much indeed. So we'll now go to the second part. And councillor Howard, did you wish to speak about the second part, which is the, the council appoints the Chair of Democratic Services Committee?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and good afternoon. May I appoint councillor Jones, David Jones, please, as reference to standing chair for Democratic Services Committee for the next period of council? David has been with us for many years now and he's a very well-respected member of this council and I do trust that David will represent fairly and carry out his duties with others in making sure that the Democratic Service Committee operates within the portfolio. But also, I think David will be very fair with how he operates the committee, that's not to say Joe and others haven't carried out their duties, but I think David will be excellent and go to the limits as well as what other chairs have as well. So I do nominate councillor Jones to be Chair of Democratic Services. I've just received a text off councillor Jones, he is trying to connect, he's got connectivity problems at the moment there and I think he's trying to get hold of John, reference to being, wanting to speak, but I will nominate him at the moment and hopefully I will be seconded on that, Chair, and thank you.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Howard, I've just noticed councillor Breakbrow, you wished to second the nomination.
Sorry, a little behind your inclination. Yes, I'd like to second that, thank you, Sheila.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations? On this position? If not, we'll go to the vote. I think we can proceed to the vote then when we get the facility in the chat bar. Oh, apologies councillor Petroni, I didn't see your hand up. Yes, please, can I invite you to speak?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I wish to nominate councillor Martin Grokka to the position of Democratic Services Committee Chair. Martin is a highly experienced individual and he'll bring that wealth of experience to the committee, he's in his first term, so he can bring that kind of new freshness look to the role and from a new council's perspective, but also bring all his years of professional experience to the role. And I think he'd be excellent in really giving Democratic Services a kick up the proverbial, to be honest. It's kind of a committee that seems to be resting on its laurels, in my opinion, and needs to be upping its game and I think councillor Grokka is the man for that job. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Petroni. Can I invite a second for that proposal?
I'll second that, Chair.
Is that councillor Davis? Councillor Easem, was that?
Yeah, can I get a chat bar, yes, I'll second that.
Yes, councillor Easem. Do we have any other nominations? No, all gone quiet. I think the chat bar's a bit slow today, so I'll give you time. Right, so with that, we'll await for the vote on that one. Going to the chat bar, right. Appointment of the Chair of Democratic Services Committee, councillor David Jones, councillor Martin Grokka. So, members, if you could cast your vote. There's something there. Yes, it's, right, that's cast in favour of councillor David Jones. Thank you all for that and congratulations to councillor Jones. Is he able to join us at the moment or is he still there having...?
I just tried him again there, Chair, so hopefully if he comes back on during the meeting, I'll hopefully come through you and I'll ask him to say a few words. Is that okay, Chair?
Yeah, if you could pass on our congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Right, the next item on the agenda is appointment to outside bodies. And I think this is councillor Fox, Leader.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Another annual report we have to have and there are often a few changes to be made throughout this. But Madam Chairman, to save time, I've been through all of the pages on behalf of the Conservative Group and there are only two, two, well, three things I need to raise and I'll perhaps just raise them and then we can, and then obviously other colleagues may have others. So there are, so there are obviously several... So there are, so there are obviously several categories. As in the recommendation, there's one category, which category B, which is for cabinet appointments. But the rest are obviously for consideration of council. Most people, most roles are put in place at the beginning of the term. There are some changes though in year that often happen. So three things from me. Number five in category C, and that is the Education Achievement Service. Councillor Greenland should be replaced by councillor Phil Murphy within that. Okay. The second one where I'm actually nominating to a vacant position is in category E. And that's number fifteen, the Prats Charity. And there is a vacancy there. And I propose that the local member for Mathen take up that position, that's councillor Louise Brown. And the final thing, just for notification, in category F, number three, there's reference to sports lot. Sports lot, I can confirm, no longer exists because Sports Wales now has taken over the allocation of sport lot grants, even though all of the dates there, you would note that they were out anyway. So that's just for really information. So one nomination and one change, Madam Chairman, from me.
Thank you, councillor Fox. Before we go any further with this, if anybody, what we'll do, we'll vote for them all at the end. But what I'm suggesting is if anybody's got any objections to any of these changes, please let me know. So we can disapprove them all in one go. There are, I think, right, I think there's a need for clarification on with regard to the Brecon Beacons National Park. The changes to that, that's been reduced from two members to one. I think that that's for, that one person, that one of the councillors now has remained on councillor Webb. So we just needed to point that one out, changes to their constitution. The Board of Monmishaw Housing, that is due to change. And I understand councillor Petroni, you might be interested in giving us a little update on that one. And other than that, as I said, oh, and Best Kept Village, councillor Evans, if we could ask you to give us a little update on that. And then we can look to vote on all of these together at the end. Councillor Brown, you've got your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Chair. It was just a query because obviously one of the nominations was actually for a voluntary body in my ward. And I just wondered, obviously, we'll do a vote for all of them. What's my position on voting in relation to that, just for clarification purposes?
Last nomination officer.
Thank you.
We'll just check that for a moment.
Thank you.
Yes, that's fine, councillor Brown, you are able to vote.
Yeah, because obviously it's a block vote in a sense, isn't it? Yeah, thank you very much.
Councillor Petroni.
Yes, thank you, Chair. It was just to say, as many of you know, MHA is going through a restructuring of its board, basically in effect kicking its current boards off and reappointing new board members based on skills and certain criteria and CV and tests, a skills-based board. This means that Monmishaw obviously will not be able to elect two members to the board directly. What is being proposed instead is a political and tenants committee. They're thrashing out the details, as I understand it now, but that will sit below the board, where councillors can represent their constituents and the tenants themselves can attend that committee and represent their views, concerns, queries, questions. And the Chair of that committee then takes all those queries to the board directly. So just to be clear, Monmishaw County Council will not be able to elect two new members to the MHA directly. Instead, there'll be a new committee where councillors directly can have representation and give their views on the tenants, on their tenants' concerns. Happy to take any questions on that, Chair.
Thank you very much for that information, councillor Petroni. Please pop your, raise your hand, oh, councillor Watts.
Yeah, Chair.
It's not in the chat bar, but I've noticed him raising his hand virtually.
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't, sorry, I should have raised it, but I couldn't see the, anyway, the point is, my overall concern is about the qualification. It was explained to us that MHA wanted members or certainly people to go onto the board to be more qualified than the, I guess, the existing arrangement we have with county councillors. Well, I couldn't think of anybody more qualified than Dimitri, right? He's well known to his community, he knows quite a lot about housing and he's got a PhD. So I don't really understand that. And I guess my overall concern is that, you know, public money for the public good. Can you hear me, Chair? Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, councillor.
So what I was saying is that it's public money for the public good. I'm not sure how accountable MHA are, effectively they're a publicly funded organisation, but without any real public representation. If anything, and I'm not saying they will, but if anything needs to be challenged or if anything kind of goes wrong or we have a different view about housing, how do we as a local authority challenge that directly? How do we hold them to account through Monmishaw County Council? Bearing in mind that we effectively gave birth to MHA formally because it was obviously Monmishaw County Council Social Housing. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Watts. Your points can be raised with Monmishaw Housing, we've all received letters from them, as you know. What we're doing today is just renewing the sort of representatives. So I would suggest you contact our representative and also directly with them. We are not actually debating the actual makeup of the, of the board, but it was for information purposes. So thank you for your comments. And the other item I just wanted to mention was there was a query regarding the best kept village competition. And I'd like to invite councillor Evans to just give us a little update on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and congratulations for your second term. Yeah, the best kept garden competition is still going ahead. But obviously nothing can happen this year because of the virus. But it will happen next year. And at the present moment, I am Chair of our committee. So yes, it will continue.
Thank you very much for that update. Right, we'll now move on to vote on the recommendation, agenda item ten, appointments to outside bodies. That the council make appointments to the outside bodies set out in the attached schedule with the exception of joint committees listed in category B, which are cabinet appointments subject to the changes that we've, were proposed by the Leader earlier. If you're all happy with that, if anybody wants me to go through the changes, I'm happy to. But otherwise, we just vote on the actual recommendation, those changes. I've got a second from councillor Greenland, thank you. Yes, that's clearly carried, so thank you all very much indeed. Now, item eleven, I would like to invite the Chair of the Audit Committee, Mr Philip White, to present the annual report. Mr White.
Good afternoon. I'm pleased to be able to bring the annual report for the committee to this, this meeting of the council. Now, as we've sat down on the recommendations in the attached agenda, item eleven, on behalf of the Audit Committee, I submit this annual report for two thousand and nineteen twenty for consideration by the council. I believe that it shows that over this period, the committee has fulfilled its role as defined in its terms of reference. The report will withstand detailed examination. While not wishing to go into all the detail in this presentation, some notable points are that the committee met seven times in the year. Attendance from the ten councillors and one co-opted member never fell below seven attending, except for the meeting held on the nineteenth of March. With hindsight, we now know that lockdown was imminent. I took the view that the meeting could go ahead if it were quarrelled, but understandably, some members stayed away. Some officers attended by video link. All of our meetings were well supported by officers from the Authority and the Wales Audit Office. Major contributors to the agendas included the Wales Audit Office, the Authority's own internal audit service, the Authority's Finance Office and the Policy and Performance Manager. As well as the significant major recurrent issues such as the annual statement of accounts and the subsequent external audit, internal audits, including plans for internal audits and outturn reports, contract procedure rules and exemptions, and the annual governance statement, topics considered during the year included the strategic risk assessment, Treasury outturn reports, statements of reserves, performance management, the annual performance review of the Investment Committee, the IT risks register and anti-bribery compliance and training. The Wales Audit Office provided reports on improving rural transport, a review of whistleblowing and fairness at work and grievance arrangements, environmental health, leisure services and the safeguarding of children. For each report, the committee were able to review the Authority's considered responses to the recommendations. The committee members, the committee considers a separate progress report from the Authority on proposals for improvement from the Wales Audit Office. Again, from recommendations, the report shows that the workings of the committee continue to be both valuable and productive and it provides assurance to the council regarding the committee's activities in the effective governance of financial affairs and other matters by the Authority. And in support of that statement, I submit this report to the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr White, very much appreciated. This is for presentation to the committee for, to receive. And I would like to thank you and the Audit Committee for all that you have done. It's, I've been on the Audit Committee, I know it's very detailed and very interesting, but it's a lot of hard work. And I thank you for your five and maybe six years that you've been Chair of the Audit Committee and all the goodwill that you've done for us. So would you like to, are you okay to take questions if anybody has any? But we do accept this information and we really do appreciate all that you've done and putting the report together.
I'm happy to answer questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, councillor White. Right. Has anybody got any questions for councillor White? If you, if you can't access the chat bar, I'm more than happy for you to switch your microphone on and just indicate if you wish to ask a question.
Madam Chair, can I not ask a question, Philip, but just to reiterate your thanks as Leader of the Council, can I just say thank you, Philip, for all of your work over the years? You've been a stalwart in taking forward our audit function. And I just reiterate the Chairman's thanks as Leader, so thanks once again.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fox. There we are, thank you, thank you much, very much again, Mr White, appreciate your time this afternoon.
You're welcome.
So we now move on to the last item on the agenda to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the sixteenth of June.
I move those, Madam Chairman.
I second them, Chairman.
You're muted, Sheila.
You're mute.
Yeah. I'll go that, I managed the first time this meeting. There's nothing, if anybody's got any problem with it, please pop it in the chat bar. Otherwise, it's been proposed and seconded that we accept the minutes, they're accurate. And I can move on then and close the meeting. And thank you all very much indeed for your time this afternoon. It was a slightly different AGM to the normal, but we managed to go through all the business and put things back into perspective for the next year to start again, four months into it admittedly. But we will go forward and we all work together. And I'm sorry, there's no tea and scones this afternoon, but you'll all have to go kettle on now. And I look forward to seeing you all at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, Sheila, well done, congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.